Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher? Mr. Krafcek?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and to Cape County Herald on January 4th, 2018. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll open up a work session with A and F. Mrs. Lane?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, I would like to discuss the resolution we have on for the general session about the changes to the budget. But before we do that, I would think we should hear the departmental reports first and then move on to the discussion. So I'll turn it over to Jill.
Okay, thank you. All right, tax collector?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I have an update on our property tax reimbursement programs. The state has mailed out the applications for the senior freeze and the deadline for applying is October 31st. I haven't heard anything regarding the homesteads yet, but it was March 15th when we received our notification last year and the credits were applied to the May quarter. We're expecting the same thing to happen again this year. The direct debit program is going extremely well. We're working on month-end reports. We are collecting tax delinquencies and water payments at this time. Just routine, day-to-day operations. Everything's going smoothly. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Tab. Welcome.
Tax assessor?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, the reval is over. Everybody has their new values and everybody's happy, right? Anyway, we only have four appeals so far. I mean, I've been getting some response back. You know, I told you that Vital has to defend these assessments for two years, so we'll see how that goes. Otherwise, it's just business as usual, back to normal, trying to get my desk straightened out.
What's the deadline on appeals?
May 1st this year because of the revaluation.
So four so far?
Four so far, yeah. Usually they wait till the end. I mean, I've had a couple of calls, like Jane Hoy called me today saying that she had a couple calls, but, you know, it depends really what happens with the tax rate, so we'll wait and see.
Okay.
Okay? That's all I have. Anything else? Thank you.
Where he left for the fire?
The zoning officer?
Left for the fire.
Our zoning officer left for a fire, so if he comes back, we can bring him up.
We can hear from him, yeah.
He was gonna do the construction and zoning. Construction officials out sick. I'll jump to the engineer's report.
Thank you. Under the category of grants, I have good news for the borough. The borough was notified that a $180,000 grant was allocated by NJDOT for the reconstruction of 92nd Street from 3rd Avenue to Sunset Drive. It's my understanding that you may be considering adding that to your 2018 utility and road program, but that's good news. Under the category of capital improvement projects, I have an update on two items. The 95th Street bathroom renovation project is currently in design and on schedule. We have a meeting this Friday with the borough to start selecting finishes and fixtures. Also, the survey and base mapping for 94th Street and 114th Street bulkhead is completed and we are entering the design and permitting phase. Lastly, we are finalizing the floodproofing options for the Marina boat ramp. We have obtained and sorted over 6,000 tide gauge data points from the last 18 years and have completed the survey of the boat ramp. We're now assessing the ability to raise the landward portion of the ramp, which will allow us to determine if raising the boat ramp entrance is worthwhile. So that could be a very viable option for the borough. That was my report.
Can you explain that a little more detail, how we would raise the landward portion of the boat ramp?
What we would do is we would look to, if I could draw it for you. You have the flat portion of the ramp and then it dives down into the water. Through my conversations with some other municipalities who've had this challenge, they have elect to raise that portion up and then transition it back down on the landward side and transition and/or make it steeper into the water.
She almost make like a hill?
Yes, yes.
That's what I was picturing in my mind, but I've just never seen it physically done before, so I wanted to make sure.
It was actually done in North Wildwood as a result of them having a floodgate and they got tired of putting the floodgate up. They kind of threw it in the yard and this became their solution. So this will all be in a memo to council, but right now that elevation is about 4.7 and you've had two occurrences over the last 18 years where that elevation, water elevation on the bayside's been over six. It was Jonas and Sandy. So in theory, and this is what we're evaluating, if we can get that ramp up another foot and a half, if not two feet, you would be protected basically from every storm event that occurred over the last 18 years. That option would cost you more money, but it's a permit solution and you don't have to rely on a public works person going there at 3:00 in the morning on a Friday for a high tide event. So we just want to make sure that it's feasible from an elevational standpoint and that we can make sure that vehicles can get up and get down properly and it meets a standard. And if that can be done, we're going to bring that forward as an option.
Do you think the North Wildwood version of this is representative of what we would be doing here?
Yes.
Or it may be more or less of a pitch depending on our elevation versus theirs, right?
We're almost there to give you that analysis, but I can tell you, like Brigantine threw up a floodgate and they wish they could have done the elevational raise, but they didn't have enough real estate to make that.
I agree with you, a more permanent solution. I think the floodgate is feasible, but, and for all practical purposes, you're right. It floods when it floods and there's not always someone there to put it up, so.
So there'll be a memo coming over to Jill where I outline the options, the pros and the cons, and we'll be able to take you through each option that way.
We discussed this at our public works meeting last week and Mark was on board to give us all the particulars that he had in hand and presented it to Jill and the rest of us. With the floodgates, again, you count on manual power to do it. You count on somebody coming at 2:00 in the morning and it's not always a quick reaction. It takes time for them, if they're off the island, you know, the storms don't happen when you want them to happen. So the elevation, if it could be done, seems like a very good option, but again, you're talking about expense. So we have to weigh how council feels, whether you want to pay the extra money or do the, or have the floodgates, the floodgates after a while rust. You have to have them replaced and that, so it's going to be a lot of pros and cons and for everybody's input, so it'll be worked out.
What kind of disparity in cost do we expect or anticipate? Is it?
Don't, I don't know yet.
You didn't know?
We're in the process of that, but what I can tell you with pretty much good certainty, I don't believe I can get that ramp up to match the existing bulkhead height, let alone the bulkhead height you've now gone to. However, if we can get you protected from every single storm that you saw over the last 18 years, that's pretty good.
That's pretty good, too. Yeah.
I believe it's on 5th Street. It's next to the, is that Salmon Towers? I forget what the, uh...
5th Street Development, the senior development?
Yeah.
On the west side?
Yep.
Having seen boat owners back up boat trailers, some of them are not the best at it, myself included.
Same.
So this raised air, I mean, is, I have to go look at North Wildwoods because I have some concern about making it, I like that approach. I think that's the right answer, but I, I just, you know, people have a hard enough time sometimes getting their boat into a flat ramp going down.
So any option that we would present, we would make sure it would conform to a standard. And one of the things I did here when I was out there with Public Works was that some of the boaters actually had issues under the current arrangement with the ramp not being steep enough. And I guess because it's so flat that their trucks end up getting into the water and they would prefer a little bit more of a pitch. That's what I was told.
I was, I would tend to think the opposite.
Well, if you watch it down there, you could really video it.
Better than television.
It is funny. It is funny.
But I think...
You have to watch your pitch because if you're pitching, you know, I don't want to get into an, you're an engineer and I'm not, but if you get in too steep of a pitch, I've seen people can't pull their boats out when they get on too steep of a pitch and they load up the trailer and then find out their vehicle, you know, it's easy to shake one off going in. It's a whole different story trying to pull it up.
That's why, right, that's why we're going to have to play with the proposed alignment and the design standards, see if we can even get this to work.
Right, because it needs to be gradual enough when you're backing in as well. I mean, you have props that hang down. If it's not gradual enough, those tires on that trailer sit forward, that prop goes into that incline and goes up before it goes down. So there's, I'm sure there's a standard that...
Right, because you're going to have a flat top, too, so it's almost going to look like a trap as well. It's not going to go up on a point and come right down. It's got to come up, flatten out, and then come back down.
Gotcha.
It's all in the math.
Mm-hmm. We leave that up to you.
So when are we looking at, like, when are you going to be done? No, when are we, when are, when are we going to have a...
I'm hoping by the end of Friday, I'm going to have a real good handle if this was a good idea or not. Because we have the survey data points in now, now we're manipulating the design.
So we're... You'll know whether you can achieve it in that space that we have, essentially is what you're saying.
Right, because you do have some space from the throat opening out to what I would call a projected curb line that comes down the roadway. So we are going to have to play with some roadway grading and curbing realignment. Again, that would probably go in like the con column because you're going to have to do more to achieve this option, which is higher cost. So there is going to be a little bit of brain surgery on that.
But we're looking to do, we're looking to do this this year? This, this, this calendar year?
Yeah, I don't think so.
And if you all decide, at least have it in play for next spring.
Here's an option. The original, one of the original designs that were done before the redevelopment of the Marina was where the shack is right now, behind that shack, that's where the boat ramp would go from west side in, from the parking lot, east towards 3rd Avenue. That would be the alternative because then it would give him all of the distance he needs to transition into a ramp that would be at flood stage at the top end and have a proper pitch.
Do you think that's a better solution?
I'm surprised we didn't do that in the first place. What it does is, it does unfortunately reduce the amount of dock space we have by two, from what I can see.
And apparently that was an option presented back, I think, in 99.
Yeah. It was.
But then again, too, that's going to be a little bit more...
Sure.
Work.
But tying into that, there is open space money coming up in August and December for...
Yeah, late in the year, they didn't confirm the dates.
Right. Marine, Marina areas and public areas such as marinas.
That we could fly.
There is, no, there is a lot of issues with the Marina right now. I got a, I got a 16, I got a 16 by 20-some foot hole in the southwest corner of Marina right now where the bulkhead is breached. And so that and the, and the pilings need to be replaced and then the walkway needs to be replaced. Bulkheads need to be replaced to get us up to elevations.
So Grant is correct.
Post Sandy, so the idea would be if we can get together and talk about it, it's possibly going in that direction.
So Grant is correct that the county's going to open up a special round of funding like they did with the bikeway, where they're very aggressive in giving you up to 100% of construction and they'll pay for 50% of the soft costs, which they normally don't do. So they're going to try to induce Marina waterfront projects, so that is consideration.
And there usually is a couple of unused boat slips.
At one point or another going season.
Not the prime ones, though.
Yeah.
That's what we lose.
Well, I think that's got to be part of your evaluation going forward, which is the better plan.
Right.
In the long run, which is the better solution to this problem?
Yeah.
I would say we develop and put it where the, the one plan that I have in my office that is probably 25, 30 years old, that I found when we were trying to figure out where the pilings were supposed to be when they were pulled out for the dredging. So it makes sense. The transition would keep the, keep 81st Street open all the way into the Marina and then they would just transition around and back them into behind where the shack is right now.
Now, it does make sense. That always causes such a mess right there.
Yeah, it's a lot of jam. So in a situation like that, that gives me more of a run to bring everything up.
That whole stone area that he, that is between the bulkhead and the parking lot is transition area for him to make his adjustments.
So these were things that kind of came out of the dialogue because that's definitely major surgery compared to, but the concrete humping, but it's an option.
Yeah, but the concrete lump, by your own admission, it's not going to be, it's not going to be an inexpensive thing to do.
No.
No, because there's roadwork that has to be, there's manholes that need to be lifted, there's curbing that needs to be adjusted.
So I think it would behoove us to look at the other option, just...
Definitely.
To, you know, if we're looking to do it, we...
Looking at everything.
We're looking at the long-term here. We should do it, do it right.
If you end up filing a grant to the county, I believe that we could include that because it's going to be a functional improvement of the area and more uses and just ways to make that work.
And it would give me more area to put kayak racks.
And a bigger area for Ray to learn how to back his boat in, right?
I gave up on that. I don't do it anymore.
So I guess we're going to include that as an option.
Yes, please.
I'll get you a copy of that.
That was in 99. That was my report.
Who's here?
Okay, Ray has come back into the room, so we'll have zoning, construction.
Thank you. Just a couple things. The revisions we had talked about for the floodplain ordinance last, previous work session, they were presented to the planning board meeting in February and the planning board solicitor is tweaking a few things that had come up at that meeting to have it ready for Monday's, next Monday's planning board meeting and we should be able to present it to you after that meeting. Second, cooperation with Mark de Blasio, our engineer, he and I and Jill are going to be looking at the street opening permits and the fees that go along with that to verify they're in line with the expenses. That's something that's coming up. We'll be looking into that with some, in some detail. Third, the state of New Jersey, as of yesterday, has revised the, what they call ordinary maintenance in the construction codes. They've added a real lot to ordinary maintenance, which does not require permits effective as of yesterday. What that means to the construction office in Stone Harbor, re-roofing in, in single-family homes mostly, but there is some commercial ordinary maintenance. Re-roofing is not going to require a permit anymore. Re-sheet rocking unless it's 100% of the structure. Re-siding, unless vinyl siding is part of it, will not require permits. Irrigation controls are not going to require permits anymore. There's a, well, it's several pages long of what they, what they've put in that's ordinary maintenance. What that means for Stone Harbor is probably, it just became harder for our construction official to enforce the new ordinance that we just adopted for building construction. Most of that is going to fall now solely on the shoulders of myself, the code enforcement officer, because now someone from Philadelphia or from out of our area can bring their contractor down on a weekend, not knowing our local ordinance, and do all of these construction procedures without coming to our office for a permit. And that also will not, that means the construction official can no more cite a violation for any of this work that's being done. And it's major, probably for Stone Harbor, it may only be a little over 5% of our revenue. There are other towns such as Wildwood that's going to be devastated with this, but it was effective as of yesterday. We knew this was coming and we as construction officials and inspectors had gone up to Trenton when they had herrings on it and stated our opinions, but they more or less didn't want to hear our opinions at the time because they, I guess they already had their minds made up. This was initiated when Governor Christie was our governor. So I guess that's about it for the ordinary maintenance. And finally, the REEDS 2 proposed yesterday. Now, Mike was part of this meeting. I was not in the meeting with Paul Massing. I did hear part of it. They are going to start the steel and the planking construction within the next two weeks. They will periodically be closing 97th Street for their crane operator to set a crane up in the street to lift steel and concrete in place. Once they get that done, they would like to take care of the sidewalks, both exposures, 97th Street and 3rd Avenue. And then they want to put up scaffolding over the sidewalks on 97th and 3rd, similar to what you would see in New York City or Philadelphia, mostly to protect passerbyers on those sidewalks. They did agree to put a covering over it, similar to what they did when they were doing the demo on the, on the fencing for the, for the demo. They'll cover it with a nice, you know, static-looking. And then, and I don't know how long, originally they had wanted to complete the project. Because it's a prefab building, planking and steel, they had originally expected it to be open maybe by August. I don't know if they're still on target for that. I doubt it. I, I don't see it as a construction inspector.
August 2018?
2000, I believe so. Yeah, I don't see that happening, but the way this building goes up, the way it's all prefabbed, it goes together pretty fast. And in fact, the, he said they'll only be in the street with the crane on and off. By the end of March, they'll be done with that phase of it, have all the structure up.
This is all precast concrete?
Planks, there are panels and planks, yes.
Yeah, so they'll drop those and it'll, it'll go real quick.
Yes, it will. So with that, the, the scaffolding along the sidewalks, is a code allowed? The, the building codes do allow for that. They will, they are going to get with Dale Engineer, the county engineer, and see how, what the county's requirements are for that on 3rd Avenue for safety and all of that nature and try to duplicate that for 97th Street, for the Stone Harbor Street. And, and that's where we are. So if, are there any questions with any of that?
So on 97th Street where there is not really a sidewalk now because they have, whatever those pipes are going down, will it be a clear sidewalk?
Yes.
My guess is that all of what they'll be erecting is all OSHA compliant?
Absolutely.
It'll be virtually identi...
Maybe they can't walk on that sidewalk.
No, correct, but I'm saying what, what I think they're intending to do is, is exactly what OSHA requires and it will, to my knowledge, mimic exactly what you see in Philadelphia or New York when a large-scale structure is being erected. Not ideal if it exists through summer, but it's safe and probably the best practice in terms of, you know, maintaining access to the sidewalk into town. So I don't seem to...
I think you just tell the, make sure the businesses on that street know.
Right.
Because they're going to start opening up.
And I, I already told them to make sure they do that.
Yeah.
One, one of them was in our office for his registration this morning and we discussed it. He plans on opening, he said the end of March, I believe, Gary. And I said they'll probably have a lot of, the, the construction up by then. I don't know if the sidewalk will be done, but his business is on 97th Street and he was very concerned with.
Yeah, and the deliveries are going to start coming.
Right.
Can we back up to the prior, your prior topic, the, the new state regulations?
Yes.
What, so that the municipality or the borough has no recourse to...
No.
Implement their own ordinances to control some of this?
Not through the construction off, not through construction code requirements. We can through our zoning office, but not through DCA, Department of Community Affairs, no.
Well, okay, so is, do we want to look at that? I mean, do we want to just let this happen and see how, or do we want to try to?
Mike Kutschenberg brought up last year, that was all going to be, last April, that was being considered and we did voice opposition at that time to it.
We did a resolution.
Right, so we did at that time. So when you're saying you do have recourse through zoning, could you just be more specific as to?
Well, just as a code enforcement officer, like I had said, I will be enforcing most of it totally from me, not, I don't know if we can make Mike, like, like some of our ordinances state, a lot of them state, construction official is the enforcing agency for, for several of the codes that aren't necessarily in the construction ordinance. I don't know if we can turn that around and say zoning ordinances are enforceable also by the construction official. I'm not sure if that's something you can do, but I don't know. It's...
So the intent here on the part of the state is to preempt a certain amount of work and you're not going to be able to backdoor that through zoning. Your zoning, you can force your zoning through there, but they're preempting this, so I, I'm not optimistic you're going to find any backdoor for that.
Yeah, zoning wouldn't have to do with siding.
No.
Right. Just, just our, our construction ordinance where you can't work on the Saturdays and the buildings.
So, right, because we are not going to be aware of who's doing what because there's not going to be permits issued, so since there's no permit issued, then they're not going to have their names listed prominently like we just said and all that's going to be...
Well, why wouldn't they have to do that?
Because they don't have to get a permit, so why would they come in? I mean, they wouldn't even know that they have to do that because they're not coming in to get a permit. So it's going to be, they're literally going to be ignorant to what the ordinances are, where when you apply for the permit, we were going to be giving them a copy of all, of the ordinance. They're not coming in for a permit, they don't get a copy of the ordinance.
Yeah, but if they don't, okay, so does that mean that, that the ordinance changes on construction that we implemented after so much gnashing of teeth is going to be impacted by this? I mean, we're not, because now we're going to have people that are coming into town.
It would be impacted in that it's, the enforcement's going to be more difficult because it's going to be a matter of driving down the street and saying, hey, there's somebody working.
Right.
As opposed to knowing where work is going to begin and then they know you can't do it on a Sunday. They literally could pull up on Sunday and be halfway through the job before somebody drives by and sees them or somebody calls or...
It's going to mean that...
Halfway through a job.
They're, they're not going to have to apply for permits, so you're not going to be on notice. It does not mean that there are no more standards. There are still standards that they must adhere to. And if they fail to adhere to those standards and you're aware of it, then you can enforce it.
Okay, so then, yeah, so then the ordinances that we changed are in effect?
Right.
And it's a question of just...
So if the police drive by...
I don't want to say serving them, but making them aware of that, of that ordinance.
Those changes apply across the board. It just means that certain people will not have to pull a permit, but they still can't work on Sunday. They still are subject to all those restrictions.
But they just might not know it.
So if the police drive by and see someone working on a Sunday, they can violate them. At least give them an warning and close them down.
And give, right, and give them a copy of the ordinance or so on and so forth, but it's just, we were going to try to preempt most of it, but when they apply for the permit, here's the rules.
Right.
But that's what we're going to lose, is that ability.
Yes.
This is going to become a nightmare.
Well, here...
I mean, it is, seriously.
Well, the biggest thing is...
Because it's going to be tit for tat. You're going to have somebody working there and then another worker from someplace else is going to call and then they're going to call the police, God bless you down there, and they're going to be running around seeing, saying, show me your permit, or you know you can't work, oh.
Well, your, your biggest thing is going to be your building of houses. That was the biggest noise and so this is minor, basically minor repairs.
That's what they're calling it, yes.
But it wouldn't apply to a house that got fully placed and then somebody can just come in and put new siding on it.
That wouldn't be made.
Separate of...
Not, not new construction.
The owner has a friend. He's got to do, his whole house is going to have his friend do the roof and his friend do the siding.
This is maintenance, not new construction.
Okay, that, just, I want to understand that, yeah. Gotcha, because I know, nevermind.
And they would know because they pulled a permit for the original construction, so they would know they can't do it. they would know they can't do it.
And Jill and I have discussed whether I work Saturdays and take another day off, rather than doing it sporadically, doing it more consistent, to be in town on weekends, patrolling the streets.
Patrol in the streets.
So...
Wow, that's big.
Just curiosity, how are we doing with the, because I'm not looking, but the signs or the, what we are asking them to place on the construction sites with a list of...
The builders that are more common in town are doing it, and they get some nice signs out there.
Good.
Several of them have. I was on them today over on the 86th Street, 88th Street. Yeah, several of them are doing that.
Good.
And they look good. They're professional. They're not putting up junk, so.
Good. Progress.
Any other questions?
Two steps forward.
Thank you.
Next, CFO, do you have any other, besides budget stuff?
The audit started, the 2017 audit this week, and so far, so good. I'm just working on the usual, year-end close and month-to-month stuff. All's good.
Okay. Borough Clerk?
The current fund cash balance is $2,718,996.3. Cash disbursements from the current fund, $4,918,887.60. In the Sewer and Water Department, in the checking account, $1,454,730. And the disbursements for the month, $1,308,73. The Borough Clerk's Office for the month, total taken in, $12,340.10. And in the Construction Office for the same month, total taken in, $45,389.
Planning Board? Planning Board. Planning Board met on February 12th. The majority of the meeting was Ray's presentation on the floodplain ordinance and the, his recommendation that it be addressed, and that will, so our next meeting is March 12th. At that time, our board solicitor is going to have a copy of the ordinance for us to review that then we'll send forward. If anybody needs any details on that, Ray's here and he can answer that. It was a pretty lengthy discussion, and he's got every detail. If anybody has any, this Ray.
This Ray.
That Ray was there too, so he knows the details, but this Ray, Construction Ray, can explain it further if need be. And we also, I want to say it was the 22nd of February, I can't remember the exact date. We met with a follow-up with Atlantic City Electric. As you will remember, we met with them initially back in January to discuss both undergrounding the large transmission poles and undergrounding distribution lines. And at that time, we had asked them if they could provide us with some information as to how many lines in Stone Harbor, distribution lines, were basically, for lack of a better way to put it, low-hanging fruit that could possibly get undergrounded, and if there was a way that we could facilitate homeowners in undergrounding in their areas. And so, when we met with them on the following, February 22nd, the follow-up meeting, I was there, Councilman Parzak, Craftcheck, Jill, and our Planning Board engineer, Paul Cates, was there, and they showed us a map of Stone Harbor, and it was color-coded. They showed us basically what is already underground and what could more easily be undergrounded, what areas presented challenges. So, we are still in, and this is basically all for the master plan. So, we are still in the thinking stages as to how to facilitate as much of that distribution line as possible by identifying easier places and perhaps telling homeowners, it would be easy for you and your neighbors to entertain this at this time, and maybe start to encourage more people to get the distribution lines done. We're not looking at this at this point, it's like the borough is the ones that would actually fund undergrounding the distribution. It's just seeing what is out there that could be the easiest to do at this time, to facilitate. And if I'm missing anything, feel free to jump in.
No, that's spot on, but it was a very helpful meeting. And there's really a disconnect between homeowners who want to approach this solution to getting their distribution underground and kind of a, we don't have a map yet, they showed us a map, but on how to best proceed to tell our residents, this group should get together, or this group, or where it is most feasible. So, it was helpful in that regard, that we're at some point, hopefully, going to be able to get a map or some sort of framework to our residents and homeowners to say, look, if you want to take down your block, from point A to point B is going to be the most efficient way to do it in terms of cost and feasibility for Atlantic City Electric. So, you as a group, you should probably get together and try and put your heads together as to who would take the transformers that are necessary, because there's a pad-mounted transformer that's going to be necessary in one or more locations, depending on the span that you're doing. And two, you know, to work on who's going to submit for the proposal and see what the cost is going to be and how that cost is going to be distributed. So, I think right now, it's a real gray area for homeowners on how, they want to get it done, but they just don't even know how to take the first step, or who to include. Is it just our block, or is it more, are their economies to scale to go two blocks or a block and a half? So, this is the very beginning of, I think, establishing some sort of framework for our homeowners to say, yeah, I want to do this, and let's move forward and try and put this together. The only other component that was discussed is if and when homeowners choose to do this, there's, I think we discussed establishing a standard for a street lamp, and Atlantic City Electric has a few options to choose from. I think we discussed perhaps putting it in our master plan as to what Stone Harbor's preferred option would be. I don't think we have any ideas yet on what that exactly is, but I think that's open for discussion going forward.
And the issue was, I think, that we chose one that they do not stock.
Correct.
And if they do not stock it and they do not put it in, then they will not maintenance it, so to speak, or will not, right, they will have no responsibility for maintaining it.
At one point, Town had said, I can't think of her first name, had said that...
Ronnie.
Ronnie Town, thank you, that when they were, the merger was complete, they thought they'd have more options. So, has that happened or not?
No, she said at this point, there still has not been any additional options. She says there's still a possibility, but I don't think she has a clue when that would happen.
It didn't sound like it was around the corner.
Yeah, no, fortunately.
This is a little off the subject, but on the subject, because I think this topic is huge. When you said ACE, I thought this was going to deal with the structures going down Second Avenue, which I think probably some of that meeting is. And I don't want this to sound improper, but I'm guessing that we are going to continue with this committee to do whatever the function is that we deem necessary with Atlantic City Electric.
But it's all, well, you're on that committee. This is all coming out of the subcommittee of the Planning Board. That's all, that's what this is completely. This was the feasibility study that was recommended by the subcommittee that was then approved by the Planning Board.
Okay.
That, yes, yeah, that's where this is all coming from.
All right, well, that's not where I was going.
Yeah, so that is the committee.
Where I was going was to sort of formalize the way we did the ad hoc committee that we have for flood, that we've done for other projects, to formalize it, because when we did that, we did a resolution, and we formalized the people on it and allowed to have the public join in. That was where I was going with it.
All right, now, this, well, this all has been coming out of the Planning Board Subcommittee, which at this time has, you know, the folks like the zoning board chair, Bill Cathcart's on it, yourself, Charles, I mean, that's how, that's where this is all coming from.
Yeah. I was looking at it from a different way.
Okay, because I do think there's a misunderstanding that people are wondering where these meetings are coming from, and that's where they're coming from, out of that feasibility study that Mott said they would do as part of their master plan review. And that came out of the Subcommittee to the Planning Board, to Council. And that included meetings with ACE. So, that's where these meetings with ACE are coming from. So, this follow-up meeting was not focused on the transmission lines so much as focused on that part of the master plan where we want to facilitate undergrounding of distribution lines throughout town as much as possible. So, that was the focus of this particular meeting.
Okay, but the first meeting, which evidently was in January, was not focused on that.
It was focused on undergrounding in general. Feasibility, what that feasibility, if you can go back, you'll see exactly what Mott outlined in their proposal as to what they were going to do in this feasibility study, what engineers they were going to talk to, and so on and so forth. And there's certain steps that Mott is taking, particularly Paul Cates. So, on top of that are these, was the distribution, so it's all part of the study. It's just the meetings that were outlined in that feasibility study.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to see, well, we can just get it back to everybody, if you want, what was outlined in the feasibility study, and it'll outline what the goals of the meetings are, because it's outlined in there.
I'm still coming from a different direction. Keep going.
So, you're thinking have a whole other committee?
I was under, the misunderstanding that part of this ACE meeting, the first one, which was in January, then there was another one, had to do with the poles on Second Avenue.
And it did.
It did.
But this one is not...
This one, this one was focused more on that. They were asked if they could come back with more information on distribution lines. So, no, it was a little, it was more focused on the distribution lines.
Well, I think, isn't Mr. Cates still working on a proposal, study, I don't want to call it a study, but point paper, let's put it that way, on the feasibility of tackling these, the new poles on Second Avenue?
Yes.
It all kind of started with that.
That's what I thought this committee was. That's why I was...
Okay.
Shouldn't it be formalized the way other ad hoc committees are?
I see what you're, right, and that's where the committee, it's, right, it's coming, right. I see what you're, and I understand what you're saying, but this is not a committee that's charged with undergrounding the transmission lines. Basically, what it is, is the Planning Board feasibility study, and it includes more things than just that.
It encompasses all of that.
I have an answer.
I think Mr. Cates would like to speak.
As part of that feasibility study, the first step was discussing with ACE what they would allow and wouldn't allow, and that first meeting was, as part of that, was mainly transmission and also distribution, but it brought up some other questions with distribution that they felt that they could better address in a second meeting. And that was the second meeting. But as far as the transmission lines go, currently, one of the things that came out of that is bringing some of the civil work in-house. You could greatly reduce your costs, but to, currently, I'm working on determining those costs. So, that's kind of where that's at now. We know what they'll allow, and we're working towards how much that'll actually cost to come up with a better idea. So, we're still kind of in that stage right now. It's still on my desk, but as far as another committee or anything, I don't think we're ready for that yet.
Got it.
Okay?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Before we leave the distribution lines that we talked about the other day, we did, we did hit on briefly, perhaps, but the idea of coordinating our road improvements going forward, our street improvements, with the low-hanging fruit on the drawings given to us by ACE, so we could, because we did discuss the probability that that would lower the costs of doing this for homeowners if it's done concurrent with the streets and laterals being redone.
As long as you have agreement with everybody on the street.
I know that. I know that.
Right.
You don't want it to be held up by...
No, 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 no.
Right, that would not be, right.
A possible approach, that if there's a block that really, you know, can get their act together and want to do it, well, now's the time to do it, when public works is going to be, and then it's going to be doing the road at the same time.
So, that is the, so that is the standard now, and actually, we had a situation last week where there was a new road that was paved, and I denied the street opening application and said, use the conduits that you put in the ground. So, that actually worked.
Good. And just one more thing with ACE to share, is remember what they were talking about with the one wire that's going to be down by the shed at the ball field?
Hmm?
Was that shared with Grant yet?
No, that's all underground, the whole recreation field.
Right, no, but you know how the distribution lines originally were going to be, new poles and lines were going to be going down First Avenue?
Right.
And then they're moving them now and instead putting them on the large poles.
Existing.
So, you could probably better explain the, how it's coming and why.
Essentially, to get across Second Avenue and do exactly what we talked about, not going down First Avenue, they need a support with a guy wire that comes off of an existing pole, so they need to go essentially with a guy wire to another pole near the shed at the recreation center with a guy wire that comes down just to the fence, not into the field. It'll come just in front of the recreation fence.
Yeah.
Oh, jeepers.
There's a maintenance shed there. It's coming over top of the maintenance shed. It'll terminate right at that existing ball field fence.
Because they have to make the turn.
So that nobody could run under it and get clipped by it.
Wow. That was one of the first places that was all underground.
Well, there's a pole there right now.
There is one pole. We'd be adding another pole and then another guy wire. You know, you look at this and it's never, whatever they're going to do, adding anything is not ideal. But when you look at what the alternative is and what we achieved by working with them, instead of having these poles come down Third Avenue, if this is the solution we have to live with, I'm fine with it, as opposed to transmission lines going down First Avenue.
Or the larger poles coming down First Avenue, like they originally proposed.
They're still going to have them down First Avenue.
No, they're not, no.
No.
Have you gone down Dune Drive?
No, they moved. No, 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 that's, no, they're not going down First Avenue. No, they're putting them on the transmission lines. That, they completely changed that plan, and that's what's making it, that's why they have to put this wire in down. Otherwise, it was going to come up a whole other block and go down First Avenue. No, nothing's coming on First Avenue in town at all.
Would Grant want to say so?
Yeah, I was, I went down Dune Drive today, and the poles that they wanted to put on First Avenue, they have already put up on Dune Drive, and it looks like identical, but it's wood to what we have on Second, so.
Right.
I'll take the guy wire.
And that's how it seemed, exactly. We're going to have that, as opposed to, we would have had 14 blocks of that.
One guy, one guy?
Wire? I'm not astute of it. One guide wire takes the place of 14 poles? No.
What did you just say?
The 14, 14 blocks of poles was originally going to be going down First Avenue.
Right, correct.
New poles, just like you see on Dune Drive. So, instead of putting up those new poles, what they're doing is putting those distribution lines on the existing large steel poles.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So, and in doing that, they have to make a 90-degree turn at, I want to say, 81st Street. And whatever the load is, in order to make that turn, it's going to require having one pole and a guy wire put up. And then, nothing's going on First Avenue at all.
That's the second pole, because there, you put one on 80th Street.
Right.
Right, but at the turn, there's one additional pole at the 9th.
That'll go to make that turn. But nothing's going on First Avenue.
I think it's a huge success.
But it was something too, for you to look at, the, you know, exactly what they want to do near that shed, and what they want to do to put around it to also maintain safety. So, it is something you need to see. They were going to be finalizing that drawing, and it's something for you to see.
And that, that was presented here at Council several months ago.
The change?
They came in and they explained what they were going to do, so we heard it.
That was a long time ago. That was in the fall, where they came back and said they had listened and they changed the plan.
Yeah.
So, who's next?
No, 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 we're not finished yet. Unless you want to hold the discussion until after. Can we do the discussion on the budget now? Okay. We had, well, there's a resolution on the general meeting tonight to reduce our tax rate by a half a cent. That was contrary to what was originally proposed. And I asked Jill to prepare some papers for all of us to look at, to see the effect that this has. And one of the biggest effects is that, if you recall, about a year or two ago, we started paying cash for a lot of our projects, not major projects, but vehicles, et cetera, the kiosks, things like that, rather than finance them. Well, in order to accomplish this, we had to take $201,300 out of a cash basis and put it into financing. That means we're going to be paying interest on that money. Plus, I'm going to have Jill go over all the other numbers with you. But my question to you tonight is, is this really in the best interest of our town to do this? We had two complaints about the tax rate with the revow. Will there be more? I don't know. But we sit here and we have the same effect that everyone else has. We don't get a discount. We don't get a pass on our taxes. We get hit the same way everyone else does. So what is in the best interest for Stone Harbor? That's why, before we vote on the resolution tonight, I wanted us all to look at the numbers that Jill put together and let's talk about it to see if we really want to reduce this half cent. So I'll turn it back to you, Madam Administrator.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the amendment that we have scheduled, if council wishes to move forward with it, we're reducing the amount we need in surplus by $7,500. We've added in two grants, the DOT grant that Mark had mentioned, plus the funding that Chippewa will be giving us for the flood study. So that's a total of $182,000. We're reducing, if council so chooses, the half a cent is $226,800. So that's a total reduction of $52,300. The general expenditures, I made a recommendation to cut out of various departments, a total of $33,000. Then you add back in the grants of $182,000. Reduction in the contribution for the dredge and beach replenishment, if you remember, we were going to do $100,000. I reduced that down where we would fund $55,000 this year. And then a total of $154,000 of capital atlight items we would shift to be bonded. And then you would have to add back in $7,700, which is the 5% down for that. And again, making the total reduction $52,300. But it would equate to a half a cent increase. Now, the capital atlight items, I typed on here bonded, but it means bonded, sorry. The kiosks of $25,000, curbing and sidewalks, $25,000. Street line painting, $25,000. Grounds equipment, $20,000. Street signs, $24,000. And the lifeguard stands at $35,000, for a total of $154,000. 5% were required to put down the $7,700. That means that we would then be bonding an additional $146,300. I did ask Jim if he could put together what effect that would be for that $146,000. And he did say, how many years did you take it out?
16 years.
Over 16-year period, you would be paying an additional $42,966 in interest. That's why, over the last few years, these types of items, we have started to try to put in and pay cash for them. They are items that prior you have bonded for. We still have remaining that we're going to be, that we would pay cash for, $221,600. So we are still continuing that process, but this is a reduction in that if the desire is to try to reduce the rate. The other option is to go back in and look at some of these items and simply just not do them this year. I took the approach that these were things that we still wanted to do to compromise. I can tell you that we did project a couple of years ago with the big projects that were coming on with the dredging and then the added beach replenishment that we now started to have to pay for, that we would need to increase by at least two cents. And that's pretty much where we're at this year. Unfortunately, compounded by the fact that you do have the revow, so you do have some people that are going to be impacted significantly more than others because their values have gone up. So the other thing that I did, and it's the last chart that I gave you, I took different properties, what their assessed value was in 2017, what their value is in 2018. I showed you what their tax levy was in 2017, what it would jump to in 2018 with the tax rate as introduced. And then you can see the dollar amount of the increase. You know, there's, I mean, they are hefty. Then I went in and calculated if we do reduce it by a half a cent, what that levy proposal would be, what the increase is over 2017, and then also what your savings would be for that half a cent versus the 24.5 cents. You know, so the, you know, the average is maybe, you know, a little over $100 that someone would save. Now, this is just on our tax, because we don't officially know what the schools or the county, or this is strictly the local tax. So, I mean, it is a policy decision on your part. Our recommendation was as introduced. However, we will do what you so desire.
I just want to say one thing. I'm looking at the items you removed. Almost all of them, except for one, were out of Public Works. Correct?
Correct. They, I tried to pick things that-
Wouldn't we be more equitable?
That were more appropriate in terms of bonding for, to have the longer life.
They're being bonded instead of-
Yes, I'm not removing that.
We're paying, we're paying interest on it.
Right.
Correct.
It was a lot of work, Jill, and thank you for showing the differences. I mean, what does everybody think? I vacillate. I go back and forth and I think to myself, you know, in the, in the grand scheme of things, when you're, and I specifically asked, you know, could we drop the tax rate and see what, what would we cut? I don't know how prudent it is to cut things only to finance them.
I agree with that totally.
So that's the one thing that, you know, whenever you cut something to finance it, then you end up paying more for it in the long run.
In this case, it's over $42,000.
Then you didn't cut it.
At all.
Right, you didn't. You just paid more for it. You're just kicking it down the road.
And let me just, maybe you can be more specific. On a $1,766 house evaluation, they're only going to save $88.31 a year, is that what you're saying?
More.
Hmm?
More?
More what?
Could save $88 by changing, taking the half cent.
They're going to save $88.
If we reduce the rate.
If we reduce the rate. Eighty-eight dollars on a $1,766, correct? I don't think that people, in my opinion, I can't speak for everybody, but a person that has a home that's $3.4 million, are they really worried about $170 a year to save it? And when we're going to go in debt and pay interest?
The biggest eye-opener on that particular property is the fact that it was reevaluated at over $1 million more than what it had been. That's why they're seeing such a significant hit.
And they haven't complained, correct, that person?
No, that one has. That's one that has.
Oh, that one that has. I would pick that one that has. Yeah, but they can come back and ask what they're asking about.
But their revow went up, $1 million. So even at, if you reduce it just that half cent, it only saves them a few dollars. Their property values changed drastically.
So then there'll be people that say, why don't you reduce it a whole cent? Or a cent and a half?
To reduce it, and then I, yeah, right. Then I guess the answer ends up being the same, so we can finance more?
It's going to cost us more in the long run. Our goal was to reduce our debt and pay cash for more things like $20,000 for curbing. Why are we financing that? $25,000 for kiosks, why finance that? It just isn't logical to save a few dollars.
Correct. I agree. I mean, I did not enjoy doing this, but-
But you did, so it's a good job.
But I did it. I presented it to you.
But it also-
The other options are to, to just delay the purchase.
So delay it completely and don't even finance it?
Correct. However, these are things that through the budget process, the departments have recommended and the committees have recommended.
Don't we fall farther and further behind?
Yes.
We do.
You do.
We do. Especially in the Public Works area, when you keep shoving it back a year or two years or three years. Now, now you're playing catch-up all the time.
Always.
Not mustard, catch-up.
Always.
What do you think? Little humor here.
I want to hear everybody else thinks before I think. I think, I think the budget's a very complicated thing, at least it is to me. And I think it would be, it's much more palatable to the public and to the taxpayers if we could say that, look, we've, this assessment has generated this amount of dollars. Here are our big-ticket items that we're working on, like the flood mitigation. What are we going to do with the distribution lines? You know, we're doing certain big projects. If we could somehow explain that we're going to take this, and I'll call it a windfall, we're going to take this windfall and we're going to apply it to this big improvement project. Rather than saying, well, we're going to, you know, we're going to apply some of it to curb improvements and some of it to a lifeguard boat and some of it, you know. I think if, I think if people can see something large and worthwhile that we're trying to accomplish for the, for the betterment of the town, for the benefit of the town, it's an easier pill to swallow. Now, that being said, I don't know-
But as Karen said, there were only two complaints.
And what concerns me is-
Out of the whole town.
And what concerns me too is the fact that we made, we had a goal that we were going to put $50,000 away for beach replenishment and $50,000 for dredging every year. And now, right off, right out of the dock, we're reducing that by $55,000. So how are we helping the town by not moving this forward? I mean, I'm not in love with tax increases, trust me. But, I mean, it is what it is. And if we have to be forward-thinking to keep this town, and from what I heard just before the meeting started, our beach took a real hit and we have another one coming. And how much are we going to get from the state and the federal government to help us replenish our beach?
See, Ray, part of the, part of the problem is we don't have a windfall to be able to give back to them, because we've already incurred large debt for major projects. That, that's where you're at. You're already behind. You already knew, moving forward, that you would have to raise at least two and a half cents to start covering your dredging and your beach.
So in effect, the, the big projects that you're-
They're the projects that you're-
I'm not arguing with it.
No, I'm just saying, because I agree with you and I hear exactly what you're saying. And that's what happened here, though. That's what's driving this, is the big projects that have been done, that now need to be paid for.
Right, if you look, your debt service has increased by $460,000 this year. That's for the big projects that we've already done. Doesn't mean we're not going to continue to do the big projects, because we are. But unfortunately, your rate has to be at a certain level to be able to sustain that. And legitimately, two and a half cents is where you really need to be. Sorry.
I was just going to say, you know, this is, this is a tough decision. It's money and, you know, where we can save, we should try to save and we should do what we need to do. And in an instance like this, I think, you know, this is, this is why council chooses the professionals that we have. This is why we have Mark, this is why we have Mark, this is why we have Paul, this is why we have Jim and Jill. So with that in mind, you know, where it's a tough call like this, I think, I think I tend to defer to our professionals who are in the trenches, so to speak. So Jim and Jill, you know, I'd like to hear again what you think. What's the fiscally responsible thing to do here? And if you could give us a little bit more guidance, it'd be great. I mean, what would you do if, if you had to make that call?
I can tell them.
Sorry to put it on you, but when it's, when it's a close call like that.
Well, like Jill said, the spending has already taken place in the capital. And, and in the presentation, you'll see that we're trying to keep debt service level. And, and this is part of the process of doing that. It's, you know, we're, we're increasing cash for capital projects, debt services is increasing, and we have to, we have to fund this. And we want to keep surplus at a certain level and we want to keep a standard of living at a certain rate. And to do that, unfortunately, it comes down to, you know, I don't know the number of the tax rate, but, or the tax increase, but it comes to that number. You know, I mean, can you play around with a little bit? Yes, you can play around with a little bit. Is it going to kill you? No. You can adjust it next year or the following year. But there is a consequence to that and some of that is increased interest cost, you know.
If you look at, I mean, we're looking at $146,000 to bond and you're going to do 42, almost 43,000 in interest on that. To me, that is not fiscally-
No.
Makes sense. So I would say if you definitely want to still reduce it, then I would say that you would want to reduce some of your capital items. Maybe not necessarily these. Like I said, these were ones that I picked that I could justify in my own mind, bonding versus not, opposed to like the computers, things like that. I don't believe that you should ever bond for computers. You have a police vehicles, they never recommend that you bond for police vehicles. So like I said, these are things that if you needed to, you could, or these are things that you historically, and historically throughout New Jersey, these are things that you bond for. I prefer that you don't. I like the path that we've taken over the last couple of years with pulling them back. You can slow the pace, which is what we're doing here, but it comes at a cost of interest, so.
What concerns me is if it's $41,000 in interest for the lifetime of that debt, and suppose we have to put up another $1.5 million or $2 million for our beach replenishment before the season starts, now we are increasing our debt further and what is that cost going to be?
Right. And there are legitimate reasons, those types of projects are legitimate reasons to increase your debt.
Right. That kind of debt I can live with. It's hard to live with debt for $20,000 and $40,000 projects. We should be able to pay cash for them.
I agree with the logic that I think I hear, that-
But I do want to say thank you to Jill for doing this report. It brings a light, a lot to light, so that we have this information for the public and it can be shown, no matter which way it goes, to say, this is why we did what we did and it's, you can see it in black and white. Not we just all decided. It was done with a lot of thought and care and what is best for our community.
I mean, what I'm hearing is we really need this money and we need it now, not later. And if we get it later, we're just going to pay more.
True. Good.
Looks like a consensus to remain with the two, four, five. Correct? That's what I'm hearing. Mm-hmm. Public Works report? We already gave the ACE update, so-
Yes.
You got the rest of the work session. Go. Go.
Everybody got their February reports?
Yes.
Anybody read them?
Yep.
You did?
So interesting, yeah.
Can you repeat back the first line of the beach? Anyway...
With the water?
Some of the, the things that are happening and are coming up recently. Bulk day is 12th. Bulk day is the 12th. Not today, not last Saturday, and we're starting to see things out on the streets.
Buffet, y'all.
Already. Driving by this one house on Second Avenue, it's got TVs on the curb line. Fodder's me. Anyway, vehicle ramps at 111, that's the new big massive yellow, um, steel closure is closed, and so is 123 because of beach erosion from the weekend storm. Tomorrow and Sunday into Monday, we're supposed to have two more Nor'easters. Tomorrow's going to be an all-day event. I'm not sure what's going to happen on Sunday yet, but calling for either snow or, or rain. We have been in contact with DEP, New Jersey Coastal and Army Corps about the erosion that we had over the weekend. They are doing calculations and evaluations on that. We've been taking pictures and sending them up to them, so they have data on every single one of these events that are coming and have passed in the last 48 hours, 72 hours. Let's see. And we will be closing other paths as this storm progresses through tomorrow. We have some areas of three, three to four feet of drop-off, which is a hazard. Beach department, beaches and streets department finally got back to 83rd Street ramp, ADA ramp, which is hopefully going to be done by mid-April, weather permitting. The grounds department finished up work on the bird sanctuary. We had multiple issues with the shell path, the tide water vault on Third Avenue. Voids in the shell path from different creatures trying to get from the saltwater side to the freshwater side created some issues. So we dug them out, filled them with concrete, and we noticed after the last couple of storms that we are actually holding water in the freshwater side again, like we were, we had in previous years. They also put riprap along the, the tide vault that goes from Second Avenue out to the bay because we are losing the, the swell there. And they also did some work on the, the actual creek that goes back along the shell path to open up the 111th Street and Third, Second Avenue side of the tidal flow back in the area, which Lenore asked us to do. Hopefully, that's going to work out for us. Let's see. Yeah, there was silt buildup in that, in that creek, so we cleaned it out. So you'll, when, when you go to that shell path, you'll see riprap rock that goes all the way around the tide vault. Hopefully, that'll sustain that. When you walk down the bird sanctuary on, on Third Avenue, you'll see yellow lines on all the areas where we're actually losing the sidewalk. It's falling into the, the bird sanctuary. That's what part of that $25,000 is going to pay for, for sidewalks. So we need to, we mark those so we don't have a trip hazard. We're going to try to get out there and grind them off before we finally get in there and do the concrete work. The grounds department also worked on the three, um, storm outlets to the marsh area along Third Avenue from 118 to 122nd. If you're driving along there right now, you'll also see riprap on two areas where there's a bubble-up system that goes through that marsh area out into the, the channel. That has been clogging up over the last couple of years, and we've been slowly cleaning that out, vegetation. Last couple of days, we were able to get in there and put the riprap in there. There's also one that you can't see that's behind a bunch of pine trees and cedar trees just off of 117, 118. That was so clogged up, you could actually walk across it and it actually was supposed to be about six foot deep and run out towards the, the marsh area. So over the, the past several months, we've been, we've been digging that out. You really can't see it because of the path that we used to get back there kind of weaves through the cedar trees. The remaining riprap is at the end of Third Avenue at 122. Will be going into that area, try to sustain that area. The buildings department continues to work on the public works office renovations and the other maintenance responsibilities that they have. Let's see. Today, we put on all of our plows, salt rigs, just in intent, in anticipation of the pending storm. They have downgraded it from four inches last night down to one inch to a coating. So now tomorrow, we're probably going to start taking all that equipment back off, but it's on there just in case something happens. Water and sewer department is working with the South Jersey contractors to make sure that all of our, our utilities are marked out. We had an issue today on Second Avenue with some of our irrigation and electrical systems to the island. So luckily, our inspector, Greg Sheeran, notified us this morning that they were going to be going across Second Avenue. So we were able to get out in front of that, so we didn't lose those, those utilities. We're still waiting for our DEP permit from, for our chlorine changeout across the street. The permits were sent up by Remington Vernick, and I still haven't heard anything over the last two months from them. I'm going to reach out to them and see what's going on. Working with Mark de Blasio on our capital improvements, on some of our storm water bulkheads, water and sewer, and our road improvements. We've also been talking to him about upgrading our, our GIS system. Went out to do a lot of markouts for the gas company over the last couple of months, and the GIS system that we have is not accurate. Some of our, some of the maps that we have are two, three, four feet off of where they're supposed to be. And that's because of the system that was used to overlay onto these GIS maps the existing as-built and coordinates that were collected over the years. Brian from the, the county and, and Mark have suggested that we move into a, are collecting a lot of the data ourselves, which, with a system that is a lot more accurate and a lot less expensive because we don't have to involve the engineers to come in and do all the surveys. We'll do them ourselves in-house. And then we'll give the, that information to our engineer, who will give it to the, the county, and then they'll do the overlays onto the county maps, which will help us tremendously because we still have some areas in town that have been surveyed. We don't know size of pipe, the actual location of those pipes, and the actual makeup, whether they're clay or whether they're iron and so on. So that's my report. And you've still got 10 minutes. Any questions?
Yeah. New matter. This came up recently, and I figured I'd bring it up for discussion. As our ordinance stands now, as you already know, I'm really just explaining it for the public here. The homeowner is responsible for any maintenance from their house all the way to the water main, correct? And we've had at least one fairly recent situation where there's been a problem at that water main beyond the water meter between the curb, excuse me, between the water meter and the water main in the street, and that homeowner's, as per our ordinance, is being held responsible for the maintenance of that, that line, even though there was a rupture. So, and when I first came on council, I was made aware of this ordinance, and on some level, it does seem a little illogical to have that set up like that, especially where the homeowner has no ability to hire the personnel to make that repair. So they're, they're essentially subjected to whatever fees the borough charges. And the reason this is coming up is because someone was charged, I think $3,000 for a rupture that happened past the water meter. So this, this occurs in an area where the street needs to be dug up, and, and obviously, it's an area that the, the borough should and wants to control so that the work is done properly, safely, and there's no contamination to our water system. So in that regard, I get it. I do have reservations about the way we have implemented the ordinance that places the burden on the homeowner. And I think in this case in particular, that just recently came up, you know, it's particularly unique in that it seems like the infrastructure beyond the water meter is so dated that it would seem that the borough has a responsibility to maintain that area, as we do with the rest of the, the areas of the street. So I'm just bringing it up for discussion before council to see what everyone else thinks. So in my mind, it seems, you know, I'd like to hear from Mark and, you know, does every town handle it this way or is it? But, you know, in my mind, my, my, it seems fair that the homeowner should be responsible from their house all the way to the water meter. After the water meter, it becomes a burden. Certainly not looking to place any more financial burden on the borough, just trying to be fair to, to our homeowners and, and take on the responsibility that's truly ours and place the burden for responsibility, which truly should be on the homeowner. So I wanted to hear everyone else's thoughts. Are, are we overreaching, I guess, by our ordinance in terms of our responsibility? And I'm interested in what other boroughs have done, but again, it's, I'm not...
Some municipalities do it the way you do it, some municipalities do it not the way you do it.
Right.
They say from back of a meter or a sanitary sewer cleanout to the home, that's on you, and then we have it from there to the main. But that's a, that's a policy, case-by-case town issue.
I just, I just, you know, I look at the situation where, you know, if, if, if it occurs in the street and it's the result of, let's just say, degradation of the subsurface because of traffic or because of whatever, age, is that really, you know, the responsibility? Where do we draw the line? And again, I'm just trying to...
Well, in, in my opinion, we need to be more aggressive, and I might be out of line here, but we need to be more aggressive with renovation of our infrastructure. And I don't think we have been over the last couple of years. A lot of the situations that are happening that are not rebuilds, new homes going in, like what happened this winter. We've had 14 or more frozen pipes between the main and the, and the meter that we didn't charge for, that we took the responsibility on ourselves because we knew that that infrastructure was in bad shape. And it broke because it froze because of the static lines. And what's happening is all of our copper and our galvanized, not a copper, but our galvanized lines that are in the street now between the, the main and the ha, and the homeowner's meter pit is decaying quickly. We're in a salt environment, and galvanized pipe does not do well in salt environment. And until we get on top of this and we, we get in front of this, we're, it's going to continue to happen. If you're, if you change the ordinance the way it stands right now and you put the burden back on us to pay for it, then you're going to have to increase my water and sewer budget by $200,000, just to pay for the main.
But you said some you're doing anyway. How are you determining when the homeowner is not...
When we had these sub-zero, sub-freezing temperatures, we had about 14 lines that broke, and we were going to charge it back to the homeowner, but we decided because of the situation that happened, that we weren't going to charge them.
I'm not suggesting that if there's a new...
But it depends on the situation.
I'm not suggesting if there's new construction that we somehow foot that portion of the bill.
No, I'm leaving new construction totally out of this.
I'm talking about when something happens through either an act of God or situations exactly like that, or through no fault of the homeowner.
It's age of the, of the material.
Yeah, exactly. Age of the material. In that situation, I look at it and say, you know, it's really sitting underneath our roads. It's sitting underneath infrastructure we solely and exclusively maintain, and that homeowner is subjected to whatever we choose to charge.
It's, and that, and that comes back to what, what your fee maintenance is. What are your fees you're charging for, for the use of the water, the rental of the meters and so on? And what's that money being, where's that money being put? Is it put back into infrastructure?
This came about because the homeowner was using us for their plumber. Am I not correct?
I don't know the situation.
No.
No?
I don't know. It's completely...
I thought this was what was discussed in the utility meeting. I don't know what you're talking about then. I don't have...
No, the homeowner had a pipe that burst between the meter and the, and the...
Main.
The main, and they inquired as to why they got a bill for 3,000. They said, this is out of my control. I have, it's not on my property and I don't under, they wanted an answer. And I said, you know, I get it. I understand where you're coming from. If you actually look at this on paper, you say, hey, wait, here's the house, here's the meter. From the meter on, you're in the boroughs right away, you're beyond your property line, and if something happens there, the homeowner's asking, why am I responsible for it?
Did this go through Jill and utilities and so forth before you?
I was asked to, no. I was asked to bring it up.
Well, to Jill, yeah.
It is, it is, it is the normal process that the borough has. You do. And Mark is right. Some towns do it that way, some towns don't. Some private companies, there's New Jersey American, some companies do that. They'll charge you from the point that you connect at their main line, they'll charge you all the way to your house. So everyone's different. You can change it. All you're doing is pushing them, you're, you're going to...
You're going to spread the cost out.
It's, it's, your water and sewer is based on user fees. It's self-liquidating fund, so you're either going to spread that amongst everybody or individual people are going to pay for... But, so Grant's right. If you choose to change your philosophy, you're just, you're, you're going to eventually have to increase your user...
You're spreading that $3,000 off across everyone's bill, is essentially what we're doing, rather than, and, and, and I think...
Right. But it's not just, keep in mind, it's not just going to be one $1,000.
No, however many there are. And I think, I think there's something to be said, though, for the fact that we have, you know, severely aging infrastructure in some areas, in some areas, you, you don't. And so now...
Well, you can also...
And Grant's right. Unfortunately, the last several years, your focus, even before I got here, your focus was on the outfall removals. So all of the upgrades of your infrastructure were related to the areas that involved that. So there may have been streets that were delayed with upgrading your infrastructure because you were undertaking this large expense there. Which is why we had the huge, we had a rather substantial, I won't say huge, but substantial increase in our water rates that are coming forward in the next year as well. So you start adding that on now, and the people really will be up in arms. I mean, what does the gas company do? The same thing.
Well, they...
If we have a problem there, we're going to be responsible for it.
It's, it's just hard for me to get my, my thought around the fact that a homeowner is responsible for something that's out there under your street.
Right.
Okay? So, and if it's something that should have been repaired by the borough as infrastructure improvements years past, and now it fails, and all of a sudden, it's the homeowner's responsibility. So like I, when I heard about this and I, you know, on our street, and you know, in the street Charles lives on, everybody got brand-new water mains and brand-new laterals at, not no cost because we pay taxes, but they were all put in, spread out free to us. But this poor woman's got to pay three grand to fix her old pipe, and it just doesn't, doesn't wash, doesn't sound right. You know, if it's something too, if it's maintenance that we deferred to do other projects, that's not the homeowner's problem.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, I, I totally agree with you to a certain point. However, you have a lot of infrastructure that has to get replaced. You're not going to be able to, to replace it all at the same time. So you're going to have people that some things might fail before you get to that particular street. There's really nothing you can do about that part of it. Unfortunately, this person happened to be in a spot where that occurred.
But how are we making a determination for some folks and not others?
Well, you should, you should not be making a determination for some. The only way that you would is if there was one that was in an area that's... The only way that you would is if there was one that was in an area that's going to be upgraded, like that's scheduled to be upgraded and this particular one had to be get, had to get done sooner than the rest of them. I mean, that's a legitimate reason. Otherwise, we should not be discriminating. And I think that's what we did. Yeah, so as far as I know, that's the only ones that. I'm sorry, what? Yeah.
How long has the ordinance and that been in effect? You know, is that an older thing?
Oh, yeah, that was way before my time.
It's been in effect.
I think it's the philosophy that you've had for.
But I don't. But the cost perhaps has been climbing?
I think there should be a process. If someone's going to abate, and I'm sorry, Grant, but I disagree with what happened. If you're going, I don't think anyone should arbitrarily say, we're not going to build them. I think there has to be a process where it has to be approved that they don't get built. Then it wouldn't be seen here. So if we didn't build them, then maybe we should take a second look at this.
We have so, and you know, the town too, over the past several years, we have so many extenuating circumstances with the amount of constructions going on, with the dredge trucks driving up and down Third Avenue. We got the gas people in ripping up the streets left and right, which this happened right in way of where the gas company was working, you know, and I, and not.
This particular incident?
Yes, not to drop a dime on Public Works, but the comment that came back to me was one of the fellows doing the repair work said, this is the oldest pipe I've ever seen in Stone Harbor.
They should be in Philadelphia.
Well, in Stone Harbor, it's Stone Harbor. So I mean, it, to me, it just seems not fair that this happens to people.
I'm not aware of.
And I agree with Charles and Ray. I think it's totally unfair. If that pipe has been out there and just because it's not on our list, we haven't gotten to it, we are going to get to it.
I don't know where it was, but I guarantee you if it's.
Let me finish for a minute. In the interim, it broke. That's not her fault. I think we need to look at it.
But then to be prepared to do everybody, right?
Well, then, we're, in the interest of time, then, what do we want to do? We want to pull the ordinance and start looking at it and come up with some sort of a way to evaluate whether or not, especially in light of aging infrastructure?
I think we should look at it.
I think it's a discussion to have in detail in utilities.
I agree.
Okay.
I can't, I can't help but look again and focus in on what Ray said. We just got, on Sunset, we just got new lines. Ours are going to be great for a long, long time and then someone sits there. And our cost got spread out between everyone that pays taxes in the borough. And this person and the other people who have had to pay for it or got billed for it have to pay just because they were unfortunate.
Yeah, basically, it's a luck of the draw.
Right.
Whether you get hit with one of these or not.
Well.
There's no rhyme or reason.
I would rather see my.
There is a reason.
There is.
There is a reason why your infrastructure in your area is done. There's a reason why there's a list that was requested of me.
Yeah, we have a ten-year plan.
Sure.
Right. But in the interim, though, if there's some culpability on the borough side, then why is the homeowner bearing the brunt of the entire cost? And the culpability meaning we just, over the years, didn't get to it?
No, no. The culpability is you have a town of infrastructure that needs to be upgraded. You physically can't afford to upgrade all of it at one time. So you're going to have, you're going to, you grade it and you do the ones that make sense for that year. You figure out financially what you can do. And yes, periodically, you're going to get people that unfortunately, you didn't get to their street yet.
If you end up changing your policy, you probably will be more in alignment with most of the municipalities in Kalamazoo County.
All right, so we'll put it back in utilities, take a look at the ordinance and bring back some ideas.
I just wanted to hear what everyone felt.
Okay.
I would like to see a, some type of cost study done as to what the impact will be if we waive all these fees and how that will affect.
It's going to end up in a across-the-board increase in what we have to charge.
And we are doing it. We are doing it.
And we're going to have to do it more if we think that this is the most equitable resolution, which the, when I look at it, it seems to be. I'd rather have myself pay a few more dollars on my bill. It's kind of like an insurance policy. You pay it, but then when it comes your turn, when your number comes up, guess what? You're not paying three thousand. When your number comes up, you're not paying three thousand.
But how many of these do we have a year? How many, how many times does this happen?
Well, just take it back and get those numbers because we don't have those numbers at this point. So that can be information that can be gotten and further discussion. Okay.
Best bet would be see the utilities clerk and find out how many have been done over the past few years.
Over the past, say, five years and see what the implications are going to be.
How many a year does this happen? Where it's, where it's not attributable to anyone, like someone digging it up.
About five or six of them have occurred over the last few years.
Thirty thousand dollars.
Five or six.
I would.
Five or six is fifteen thousand.
Fifteen to eighteen thousand.
Okay. Okay. We need that motion to adjourn. So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or adjourned? We'll come back in about three minutes.